All right, we call this meeting to order. Now is the time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda.
My name is Jim Nelson. I go down to Texas in the wintertime and I'd like to know why I'm being charged for garbage pickup, landfill, and all that on my water bill, and I'm not using services.
It's just standard if you have water hooked up.
I'm not using it, so why am I paying for it?
You have those services hooked up. If you would have your cable hooked up, you'd still pay for that?
I'm not on cable.
You can discontinue the charges if you have the meter removed. Then all services.
What would charge me to have the meter reinstalled?
I think it's $85 to remove and $85 put it back.
But that will stop everything?
That stops all charges.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to consent items.
I make a motion we approve consent items.
Second.
I'll second.
Peg, good question. Do you want to mention a change or does it matter?
We do have a change on item B for cigarette permits. It's July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Semalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
New business, item A, public hearing on 2020-2021 budget amendments.
You just have it in your pack at the what the amendments were. Finance committee has gone over them. There's the state form that we have to put in, and then there's the detailed amounts where they came from. Sarah did some comparisons. The budget amendments are very similar to last year. A lot of times the amendments are some in and out money. We'll have maybe some expenses incurred in one fiscal year, and the next year we'll recover the revenues in the next year. So it's pretty standard for us to be for this.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
And Sloan?
Aye.
Item B, resolution adopting the 2020-2021 budget amendments.
So move. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item C, public hearing on proposed sale of property at 100 East State Street.
This is the Tea Garden building that the group called Why Not Us LLC is looking to acquire and then redevelop to be able to be a usable restaurant. Part of the package for the redevelopment would be the purchase price, and then the remaining portion of the 150 would be for the redevelopment of the property. And so this would be the public hearing portion. If anybody's spoken to the council, or if anybody's here, I believe that they were actually going to have a representative or two from the group.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi. We have really appreciated your patience as we've worked through a few things. As you can imagine, 2020 has affected everybody in a lot of different ways. We've sent out some information about the ownership and management and the commercial use of the Centennial Building. And at this point, we would refer to it as the Centennial Building instead of Angie is not going to be involved with this at this point now. And we are excited about working with a new restaurateur and chef who is here for the long term. We're not ready to announce that yet, but we're sure that it will have a new name. So it may not be the Tea Garden even, but it'll be a new name, but it's the same kind of vision that we had from the very beginning. We have some members of the board. Our board, we have nine members on our Board of Directors that we represent, 45 unit holders that are a part of Why Not Us. And we also have been taking in other donations from people from just in honor and memorials, and we know we'll continue to do that. So we're very excited to move towards this next step. Do you have any questions for us?
Peggy, why was it, oh, sorry, catching it right as you're, Light Centennial Building? Is there a history behind that, or how'd you guys come up with that name?
That's the historical name of the building, and it has it on the west side up at the top. So we'll just refer to it as that, as a Centennial Building. We're in the process of working with a historian along with those other buildings on Wilson that the city has acquired to try to get the building as a contributing building to the Jefferson Historic District so we can tap into state historic tax credits, too.
Great.
Coltrane?
Yeah, Peggy, is there, I know you're probably starting with ground zero with your restaurateur part of the business now. So is there not really a good timeframe of when you could start working on morphing that downstairs part of the building? And are you doing any plans with the upstairs part of it?
Yes. We have been working with Pete Franks all along and have plans for a commercial kitchen, two ADA accessible restrooms in the main level, and seating for 44 people that will continue to go through. Now that we feel more confident in our potential business person involved with it, we'll be working with Pete Franks on working with contractors. We hope to get started. Our goal would be to finish by the end of the year, hopefully in December. The other part is apartments. We have plans for two one-bedroom apartments in the upper floor, and those have already been designed as well. When the costs come back, then we'll determine whether we can do all of it at one time or if we need to wait on the apartments for just, you know, a little bit longer. We will plan to do all the utilities at the same time, and so the design has incorporated the upper story along with the main story, or the main restaurant area at the same time. Does that answer your questions? We're hoping that we can announce our new person as soon as we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your support. That whole, the roof project, I know when we went up and took a look, Pete Franks said to us, "This building will stand another 100 years easily." So we really have appreciated you working with us and getting that secure. I think we have saved a major building in the downtown and a corner building, and that whole Wilson Street is going to be bustling before we know it.
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Sloan?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item D, consider resolution approving agreement for sale and redevelopment of property at 100 East State Street.
It's be the final council action then to be able to enter into the agreement and then convey the property as well as the redevelopment financial portion.
I move to approve. Second.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item D, consider approval of second reading of ordinance change of zoning on property on or adjacent to East Clark Street and East Reed Street lying east of North Wilson Avenue. And this is residential, single family to residential multifamily.
This is your second reading. This is the area north of downtown that would be rezoned if approved, that this reading and then your third reading for your multifamily. Obviously, there's a lot of single-family homes there, but this would allow a large swath so that if there was going to be some multifamily put up, that would be allowed.
I'd move to approve the second reading. Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item F, consider approval of second reading of ordinance to change 504 and 506 East Clark Street from light industrial to residential single family.
This would be very similar. It's been zoned light industrial. It seems to have been an oversight from when the zoning was actually completed. It's just basically correcting that. And so on your agenda item, not only is there a second reading, but there's also a consideration of a waiving of the third reading if the council so chooses to do so.
I move to approve second and third readings, or waiving the third reading.
Waive the third reading, yeah.
So do you want that or two different?
Yeah, so we'll do the approval of the second and then waive the second and third.
So we didn't do that prep here, but you're just going to do it for this one?
Yeah, because they're going to keep the third reading for the second.
This is approval of the second reading?
Second and third.
And third, okay. And waive, and waive the third, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a first and a second?
I'll take it, I'll do the second.
Who did the first?
I did.
Okay, Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item G, consider approval of first reading increase to water rates by 3%.
This was put forward by the Water Committee, Water Sewer Committee. It's part of our budget we put every year as for figuring at least a 3% increase. And we've done this for a number of years to keep up with costs. So it would, by a 3% increase for water would raise the base rate by 35 cents for the first 135 cubic feet and 22 cents for the next, for every 100 cubic feet after that.
And this one is the normal rate increase?
This is very standard, the 3%.
Yeah, this one kind of keeps us break, not break even, but where we need to be.
Sure. As Jim, right now their firm is doing a study of the water plant, and then we can see if, moving forward, if 3% is going to be adequate to cover the expected cost in the future.
I'll move, we, it's their first reading.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Item H, consider approval of first reading to increase water rates by 5.5%.
Waste water.
Waste water? Sorry.
Again, this has been, this is a little bit different. It's 5.5%. This was calculated on the, based on our needs to pay our bonds, which will be, this will be over a five-year period. This also includes our normal 3%. So we're really 2.5% over what we normally would have had. I think it's a good testimonial to the council over the long haul is that some of our initial estimates were going to be 7, 8, 9% for this sewer plant upgrade increase. So by increasing these rates the way we have over the years, it's taken a lot of the sting out of this down the road. And this is for five years. This would be a first reading of 5.5% per year for the next five years.
Yeah, even though we don't know what the total cost is going to be, Jim's working on that now. But in order to satisfy the Iowa Finance Authority, who we're going to really rely on to help finance this whole project, the recommendation is to get this in place now. So that's why we're looking at it now, even before we know what the exact cost of this upgrade is.
We've said this a lot before, but can you say again, like, without the upgrade, what sort of lifespan the current plant would have?
Well, Jim can answer that, but this is more related to compliance than it is anything else.
Yeah, the DNR issues discharge permits, I believe it's every 10 years. With the latest one that Jefferson got, it has increased parameters for different elements that you have to meet the discharge limits on. The plant as it is now cannot remove those sufficiently to make that, to meet those discharge permits, limits. And then also, the plant is, I believe, at its about 25-year design life, so we're starting to see some increased maintenance issues and equipment failures that we're looking at addressing along as part of this project. So it's kind of a two-step or two-part project to address process items so that we can meet discharge limits and address some equipment issues at the same time.
I move to approve the first reading. Second.
Waitrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item I, library expansion project presentation.
Take us just a second to get set up with the PowerPoint.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, I have a question, if I may. Why is it that there was, you can waive the third reading for one of the zonings, but the other one, you weren't given that option to waive the third reading? I was just wondering why that was. Just chose not to. Okay, but there still will be a third required reading for that other zoning. Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, if you guys are ready for me, I'll go ahead and start. I'll try to keep this to 10 minutes. I promised Mike I wouldn't talk your ear off, but I like to be prepared, and I've got a PowerPoint presentation, so bear with me. Matt, thank you for joining from Hawaii, though I think you're rubbing it in a little bit when we can actually see the waves crashing behind you. So thanks to you guys for having us here. The Friends of the Library are here. Several of the members of the Board of Trustees, our director, our assistant director, are all here. You can see there on the left our lovely Carnegie building. That's a picture of it from 1910. It was built in 1904. And there on the right, it's the way it looks today. You can just see our addition there in the background, which was built in 1967. That means we have had no major building work done on that library for more than 50 years. So we think it's sort of time to move forward with some work on it. Next, please. So I won't go into great detail about what we offer. You know that, you've all been to the library. But we do have reading programs for all age groups, technological services, which include internet access, word processing, a photo kiosk pre-pandemic. Obviously, we have traditional checkouts, public meeting space, one sort of open space in the adult section, one space in the basement. Obviously, we have research opportunities via those avenues just mentioned, but also via our digital newspapers and electronic databases, and our Genealogy Society makes use of the historical resources that we have. I'll talk to you a little bit about where we got these numbers later. We had a study done a few years ago that showed us that our public library loans 50% more items, provides twice as many programs, and our book collection is 17 to 28% larger than our peer group, that is, libraries in towns of similar sizes to ours. But we do it in a smaller space than our peer group libraries do it in. So that's really a testament to what Jane and Terry have done all of these years. Next. So we have already invested a little bit of time and money into finding out what our library needs. In 2011, we sort of started this process, so that's a decade ago. We started this process by doing a planning assessment with Jett Kofoot, who was an administrator with the Central Iowa Library Services, and that was done in conjunction with Jane and Terry. It was free of charge, and it was really just a very brief study on some of the limitations of our library. And the recommendation that came out of that was to hire an expert for a formal needs assessment. We did a couple of other visionaries or visualization sort of studies in 2015 in conjunction with Main Street and the Chamber, and in 2016 in conjunction with Iowa State. Those were sort of low-cost items. But in 2018, we decided to hire for the needs assessment, library planner George Lawson. He charged us about $8,000 to provide a detailed report on the problems with the libraries and provide recommendations for the future. He ended that report by recommending an architectural feasibility study as our next step. Next, please. Just a few details about that report, so you get an idea of what he provided to us. Our current library is a little bit less than 8,000 square feet, and it's too small. We knew that already. Just to run our existing programs, so to do those adult reading programs, to have that meeting space, the genealogy resources, and the collection that we have, we should be in a minimum of 12,000 square feet. Okay? So that's a third more space than we already use just to maintain our current level of programming. And that leads to some of the problems with the space that we have. If you've been in the library, which I know you all have, it does feel crowded when you walk in. That's not a criticism of our director, assistant director, but it, you know, there are a lot of things in there because it's not a big space, and we're trying to house a lot of different things. Because of that, it fails to meet a lot of Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. We are grandfathered into that, so that also makes major improvements really difficult. If we engage in any improvements, we then have to overhaul a lot of things, including the checkout desk, the bathrooms, et cetera, to be compliant with the ADA. It lacks adequate meeting space. There's only one office space really in the building, which has to serve all of the employees, and so that makes it difficult for them to be efficient in completing their work. And then we do have some failing infrastructure. When I first joined the Board of Trustees, I sat in on one of my first several meetings, and they were covering the computers with plastic to keep the water from the leaking roof from dripping onto the computers. So obviously, not great when you have books involved either. Next, please. So what is our request? We are asking the city to fund an architectural feasibility study for us. That was the, excuse me, the recommendation of George Lawson at the end of his study a few years ago. That study is going to be pretty extensive. It will provide three options for library expansion. One would be renovation and extension of the current facility, including the Carnegie Building. One would be potentially repurposing an empty building, or I guess potentially buying another building already here in town. And the third option would be a total rebuild of a new library. It's the logical next step in our process. I'll explain what I mean by that in just a moment. And we have had so many amazing recommendations from community members and those interested in this project, but the long and short of it is that none of us are architects, and we don't really know what our options are, to be quite honest, and we don't know how much those options are going to cost us. My child's really dirty. We don't know how much those options are going to cost us. So it's great to get those recommendations, but until we have a professional conduct this feasibility study for us, we just don't know how to proceed and which of those three options would be best. It would cost approximately $40,000. I did not pull that number from thin air. About 18 months ago, we talked with Peter Franks of Franks Design Group, and he provided us with a cost estimate. You have that in the packet that Jane handed out to you. And that includes all three of those options. We did that in support of a grant to Grow Green County, and so it is 18 months old, but it's, unless his rates have gone up significantly, I wouldn't expect that to change too much. It obviously doesn't require building materials or anything like that. Next, please. So as I said, we have invested in those preliminary steps. This is the next logical step. We did the low-cost stuff. We did the needs assessment. We know we need more space. We've known that for a while, and indeed, we probably need double what we have according to George Lawson's recommendation, between 16,000 and 19,000 square feet. We think that after this feasibility study, if we decide upon a plan of action, that we have a lot of opportunities to fund a new space. But the difficulty is that there's so little funding available for these sorts of soft costs. There is some out there, but it's usually, they're very small grants. Indeed, when we applied to Grow Green County for this grant, they liked our application, but told us that they don't like to fund feasibility studies, that they're much more interested in funding bricks and mortar projects, which is understandable. But it's just very difficult to try to find the money to do these sorts of things. The library does have some money saved up, but unfortunately, I mean, it's great, but unfortunately, a lot of that is specifically designated in people's wills to be for specific items, and none of those include a feasibility study. So we think that the city is the appropriate place to request those funds. Next, please. Why? Because the population of Jefferson, the entire population can potentially be served by a library. In addition to that, rural Green County residents would also benefit. It's especially important, though, we think, for some specific subsets of our community, which include children. Our children's librarian, Terry, has been amazing. She actually runs programs that see more than five times the number of children come to them than peer group libraries. So that's pretty amazing. On average, our peer group libraries saw about 2,900 children in their programs. Ours sees more than 12,000, and she's doing it in that confined space. Senior citizens who might be alone otherwise, they can come to the library, do jigsaw puzzles together. It's a place for them to socialize and, you know, avoid being isolated in older age. And then for underprivileged individuals who might not have access to the electronic resources that they need for job hunts or for taking online classes, we have word processing. We have internet access for them. Next, please. So moving forward, we would obviously love to work with the council, the administrators, city attorney, city engineer, and any other interested parties. We would be happy to submit a by a library. In addition to that, rural Green County residents would also benefit. It's especially important, though, we think, for some specific subsets of our community, which include children. Our children's librarian, Terry, has been amazing. She actually runs programs that see more than five times the number of children come to them than peer group libraries. So, that's pretty amazing. On average, our peer group libraries saw about 2,900 children in their programs. Ours sees more than 12,000. And she's doing it in that confined space. Senior citizens who might be alone otherwise, they can come to the library, do jigsaw puzzles together. It's a place for them to socialize and, you know, avoid being isolated in older age. And then, for underprivileged individuals who might not have access to the electronic resources that they need for job hunts or for taking online classes, we have word processing. We have Internet access for them. Next, please. So moving forward, we would obviously love to work with the council, the administrators, city attorney, city engineer, and any other interested parties. We would be happy to submit a formal request for proposals, if that's necessary, for sort of Iowa code. Or we could continue to work with Peter Franks, if that's something the council thought would be advantageous. We would probably need to have a vote on that with the board. But if we wanted to go for the request for proposals, George Lawson recommended the American Institute of Architecture's process, which is a qualification-based selection. I don't know what all of that means, but he does. And if we get to that stage, and that's something that we want to do, that would be a very good place to start. In terms of funding a chosen project, we do have some money in our trust and agency account for very specific things. So we would have a little bit to devote to that. I've listed there a number of grant funders. I won't read through them all, but the city engineer was kind enough to recommend the USDA Rural Development Grant. We would have tried again for Grow Green County funding, and the four listed at the bottom are all grants that libraries in our area have received in the past, grants from to-do building projects. So there's good reason to think that we could be successful with those. We would obviously also solicit private donations from individuals, businesses. Maybe there's an option for TIF funding, and we would certainly conduct fundraisers. Next, please. So I will leave you with this quote from our town's namesake, Thomas Jefferson. "Books constitute capital. A library book lasts as long as a house, for hundreds of years. It has not been an article of mere consumption, but fairly of capital." We think that a beautiful, functional library space can really help inspire a lifelong love of learning, but it also can help build this community. I know this council, and the citizens of Jefferson, Main Street, the Chamber, have all worked so hard on our town to revitalize the square, to improve our schools, to attract new families here. And we think that an improved library can really supplement that. So we humbly request your support in funding this study. Thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. And if I don't know the answer, thankfully, I have backup in the Board of Trustees and in Jane and Terry, who can help me. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see, and I agree with that, that you took from the Lawson Plan, that losing the Carnegie Building is off the table, right?
Is it off the table?
Right. That taking that building down?
Oh, I don't think anyone would want to take that down. I think if we were to, I mean, I think everybody has their preferences. Some people would love to stay there, but, you know, just in the event...
I mean, even if the library's in a different location.
Yeah. No, I mean, and that would obviously not be the library's decision. That would be the decision of the council. But no, we certainly wouldn't want that to happen, and I would love to see it be used for some public purpose in addition.
Sure.
But, you know. Yeah, I guess if it came down to it costing $10 million to do the Carnegie, you know, renovation and expansion versus much less than that to build something new, then we might have to consider moving.
Back on the, I don't know how many years ago it was, the Jette Kofirst, the special space assessments? What, were you able to make some changes as a result of those recommendations, or...
Jane, did you make changes? I didn't live here then.
Well, we determined at that time, the issues that were identified were that there are things that a lot of contemporary libraries have that we don't have. Study rooms, large meeting room spaces, places for storytime, without moving furniture around, inadequate climate control, a large book collection, which we have worked on reducing. A lot of people are reading with their devices now, so we also offer that. So there's a whole virtual library that's a much larger collection than the physical book collection is now. So, there's a whole list, and I have a copy of that, and would be glad to give it to you. So, there's nothing we can do about not having enough parking spaces. So there were a lot of things identified on there that we really couldn't address. Some of the ADA compliance, we've made changes where we could, but there was nothing large that we could do.
No place to go.
Yeah. That was kind of our initial step.
Okay. And so if it weren't for the fact of being able to be grandfathered in on ADA requirements, the library's absolutely not compliant?
That is true. To be certified with the State Library of Iowa, I started in 1989, and in 1993, I believe, was the first year that we were certified with the state. And to get to that level, we installed a lift, and made the sidewalks handicapped accessible, a handicapped accessible door. But there are lots of other things, like the restrooms, you're right, we had to be sort of grandfathered in. And the shelving is not wide enough apart to have wheelchair be able to go down through there. Yeah, so, we made the changes that we needed to make to be certified with the state, but to really be truly compliant, we're not.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I would just add that this is the community's library, and we're really looking forward to having input from all of the community as we go through this process. And Terry and I go to a lot of libraries around the state, and we know what our library can be, and we would love the opportunity to offer that to our community, and not be limited by the size of our facilities. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for me? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Item J.
We need a...
No, not on this one. The next one. Item J, consider approval of funding for a library expansion study.
And they're proposing...
I'll make a motion to approve the funding.
Up to 40,000, and it'd come from Grow Green Funds. I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Somali?
Aye.
Item K, Main Street, Chamber Quarterly Report.
It's nice to have a bigger group with us than normal. I know the past couple of quarterly reports, it's either just been Jabeen Dovendick or myself, so it's nice to have a bigger group with, able to present on some, on what some of the teams are doing. We have a few people missing in attendance. Either they're coaching a ballgame or attending a kid's ballgame, so bear with us if I have to fill in for a few of the teams. So, happy to give you our quarterly report. And I will start with our Retail Revamp and Promotions Team. Bonnie Silbaugh chairs that team, and she's actually one of the coaches tonight that can't make it. So I do have a couple of notes from her, and then I'll pass it on to the rest of the teams. The Retail Revamp Promotions Team is continuing Operation Shop Small and Surprising Shoppers with Chamber Checks Monthly. Business owners are looking forward to an amazing Bell Tower Festival and anticipating a lot of people in town. It's not impossible to shop local at Bell Tower Festival, as their theme with Mission Impossible. Saturday, July 10th, will be a sidewalk sale. Shop local for fair prizes to tie in with the Green County Fair. And last, Green County Internship Program has three students involved with six different businesses, providing social media support. These are seniors who have graduated and will continue to work with these businesses through July with a huge collaboration of people involved, including our Organization of Jefferson Matters, the Main Street and Chamber Community, GCDC, Chatterkick, Green County High School, and others. So it's really an amazing project that they're really excited about. And she just wanted to put a note in here to thank you for your support for shopping local and dining local. So I will pass it on to Karen with Design.
Karen Lawton and I am from the Design Team. We're very busy right now. I'll start off with our mini-grants that we give. We do have one application out for a facade mini-grant. Habitat for Humanity has applied for one, and that application has been approved. So when they finish their work and submit their bills, we will award them up to $500 for their work on the facade of their building. We also have Iowa State Extension applied for a storefront signage mini-grant, and that application was accepted as well. So when they finish their work and turn their bills in, we will, we will give them a check for up to $500 as a matching grant toward their work. And that will be our first grant outside of the historic Main Street District. So we're trying to expand our work into the rest of the community as we combine our Chamber and Main Street groups together. We just recently planted the hanging baskets, the pillar planters, and the cluster planters in our downtown area, and it worked really well this year. We used an adopt a planter program, so we had churches, businesses, book clubs, other groups that volunteered to adopt the planters for the year. So that worked out really well, and we hope to continue with that. And we want to thank everybody who worked on that. We're also working with some high school students on an art deco piece for the city planters, the pillar planters. Those will be installed when the new school year begins. I think they're actually finished now, but it didn't work into our spring planting. So at the beginning of the school year, we'll be working with the students from the high school on installing those. We're also working on an interactive display for the Bell Tower Festival. It will be at the southwest corner of the square. It'll be a place to have an interactive display and a photo opportunity. So we'll be putting that together on the Friday of Bell Tower. And I also had a business that called today from the historic downtown Main Street area that would like help with a landscaping project. So we are ever so busy and glad to be that way, and we also want to thank the city for their cooperation and support. Most of our projects are in partnership with the city, so we thank you very much. And I'm just a grandma, but I have to head to the Little League Field as well, so. No coaching, just a spectator, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the Economic Vitality Committee. I am co-chairing that committee with Jill Morton. Some of the things that now we're able to start back up, we've just had several Java and Juices. That was very popular a couple of years ago, and we've had several of those events. And we would offer it virtual on our Facebook Live, if that would feel more comfortable for a business or organization. We'll be working with another applicant for the Challenge Grant. We anticipate that to be $75,000 again. We feel like we have a recipe for success, and there's another building on the square that's interested in pursuing that. We've updated a lot of the information, and it's on the Main Street Chamber website, with contractors, financial institutions, anything that a business who would be coming to town would need to know, along with financial incentives that are offered from locally or the state. And so all of those are offered on our website, and we do have a new business brochure that includes a lot of little incentives to welcome people into a new business to the community, such as, like Funky Zebra will be coming, and they've received that brochure. A big step in being able to visit our existing businesses has just begun, with the goal of trying to get to as many as we can by the end of June. There are over 280 businesses in our community, not just the Main Street District, but throughout the whole community. We have a small but mighty group in the Economic Vitality Team, and we welcome any other volunteers in the Board of Directors to help us with those visits. And our main goal is to thank our existing businesses and see what this organization can do to support them. So we're just starting those businesses, visits with a lot of success. We want to support your continued efforts in acquiring buildings and renovating them to bring other businesses, and congratulations on the work that you've done so far. I know it was hard, but it's paying off, and other communities are really taking a look at what Jefferson has offered. So congratulations on that. We have mini-grants available, and probably the last thing that brought the Chamber into this Economic Vitality are those ambassador visits. You'll no longer see the green jackets. We've retired those. And we now have some really, and I should have worn one of those, a vest with your logo on it. And we welcome anyone to be a part of the ambassador visits, and an email will go out. We have quite a few scheduled already, and look forward to even more in the future.
I'm Deb McGinn, and I chair the Tourism Team, along with Pat Richards and Beth Vanderwilt. The Tourism Team just won two different award categories from the State Iowa Tourism Conference. We were really happy to receive these. We received Outstanding Marketing Materials last month, and we also received the award for the Outstanding Attraction for the Mahaney Bell Tower here in town. We're expecting a big increase in people visiting the tower this year just from that. And by winning the state award for marketing, we know that we're spending the tourism dollars that were allocated for marketing wisely and very effectively. We have handed out over 25 plastic holders to merchants that hold a tri-fold informational brochure to give out to visitors. These hopefully will help those frontline people needing the correct information to give out to people. We've just mailed out over 80 postcards to individuals that each of us on the team know that don't live here, that maybe would like to come to Jefferson for a visit. Sometimes, all you need to do is extend the invitation. So that's kind of what those postcards are all about. The postcard featured a nice photo of the bell tower with the rooftop art, and on the back, it says, "Something extraordinary is going on in downtown Jefferson." And it had, we put the QR code on the back of that card as well, that people can scan to open the tourism video featuring all the things we have here to experience. We still are doing our Fund Jeff from Jefferson videos with Jeff Lamore to highlight different events and happenings in downtown. And we are continuing our weekly Thursday ads on KKRL Radio to reach a broader and different audience. Those ads feature businesses, places, and events, and air 10 times a day each week on Thursdays. We have a print ad scheduled for our Iowa Magazine for their June and July issue. We're looking forward to Choose Jefferson this summer again, where people can grab their favorite takeout meal, and come down to the Bell Tower Plaza every Wednesday, beginning June 2nd throughout the summer, to hear those live bell concerts. The Thomas Jefferson Gardens are starting a new program called Kids Sprouts with their gardener, Jean Walker, and today they just planted a massive amount of new plants in the garden. History Boy Theater will once again have a live musical production, June 18th, 19th, and 20th, here outside at Kelso Park. And there will be one new historical plaque downtown. This plaque, number 17, was made possible by a grant that we wrote and received from the Green County Community Foundation. Once installed, it will honor Iowa Supreme Court Chief Justice Gates Albert, who grew up in Grand Junction but had a law practice here, and then went on to hold the highest position on the Supreme, Iowa Supreme Court. All of these bronze plaques make a very nice educational walking tour downtown. So there is lots to experience this summer, and then when you experience that, you will find out for yourself why Jefferson is every day extraordinary. So that's the Tourism Report, and while I'm here, I'm going to give the Tower View Team report. I'm the chairperson of that as well. We called Eric Hanson from KCCI and got him to come to Jefferson to do a This is Iowa segment for the new rooftop art that Jefferson Telecom sponsored. It was a great piece of advertising, not only for the public art that we have here, but for downtown Jefferson. I've had several artists contact me already, wanting to see how they too can be involved in rooftop art. The Arch Alley Project is ready to go. The ribbon cutting will be June 4th at 5:30. The artist will be here that evening, as we all discover what Arch Alley is all about through his eyes. Thank you to the city so much for the great collaboration on this project. We hope everyone can attend that evening. I think the more people know about what that all means in that space, the better. Along with the bench that's in there now, that the Class of 1968 donated, that class has now given us even more money for two outdoor chairs and two small tables for Arch Alley, to really make it a conversational area in the front of that alley space. That's really important to have when doing any type of creative placemaking project in these alley spaces. So we are really fortunate that they wanted to help out even for... That's really important to have when doing any type of creative placemaking project um in these alley spaces, so we are really fortunate that they wanted to help out even further in Arch Alley. The Ring Out for Art Sculpture exhibit, exhibition is up and running on the Bell Tower Plaza. We have sculptures from two Iowa artists and two artists from Missouri this year. The People's Choice Award of uh voting will begin June 11th, and it goes through August 15th, and you will be able to do that inside the Bell Tower. Um, Home State Bank is once again our monetary sponsor for this event, and I, and we think that this year's sculptures are probably the best that we've had in six years. So that was a great thing to get involved with. Um, what we are looking forward to later in June for Tower View Team volunteers are painting a colorful geometric mural on the back of the Iowa Realty Building to add some interest to that area over here on the alley side. So if you'd like to paint, let me know. I'll call you. Um, we are still doing the upkeep of the small gardens in Sally's Alley to make sure that continues to be another great space in our downtown. And by we, I mean Deb Kuserek and Shelley Berger. They do an awesome job of keeping that alley looking top notch. And we are beginning to get ideas gathered for the West Alley that we are now calling Imagination Alley, which will happen next year. This will be another alley renovation um with creative placemaking in mind again, and Jean Van Gilder, Deb Kuserek, and Jolene Peters are spearheading up that project. So the last alley renovation should be a really fun one to develop. So that's it.
Hi, everybody. Um, the rest of my committee is at the ballgame, so you're gonna have to listen to me. I'm with the Organization Committee. This past year, our committee has continued to meet and then tentatively plan. We sent out graduation cards to the graduates of 2020, letting them know how proud we were of them. We supported them in pursuing further education and their careers, but Jefferson will always be home and consider coming back here. The people we had sign these cards were past graduates of Green County High School that have recently moved back to town and taken up residence. And then also, there were businesses in town wishing them well and possibly having future opportunities for employment. And on June 16th, the Organization Committee will be hosting a volunteer appreciation reception at the Performing Arts Auditorium of the high school. It will be from 7:00 to 8:30, so please write it in your calendars. It is our way to thank the volunteers and, and donors of our organization and to inform the public of what the merger of Jefferson Matters, Main Street, and the Chamber, how it's coming together and what we're doing. It's really working well. And finally, in the end, to present the ABC Award, which is a Chamber thing. The event is open to the public, and I, you're all invited, and I hope to see you there. Finally, this fall, we're hoping to do another infamous Family Feud, but that's still on hold, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will wrap it up um with our last, unless you want to do events quick. Right in time. Let's have Philip do events. He'll know more than what I do.
Thanks for covering. That worked out really well. Hey, I'm Philip Heisterkamp. I'm the Events Team Chair. I have no idea what they said or how this should go, so we're just gonna wing it. But events-wise, we've done nothing until May of this year. May of this year, we did the bike ride around Green County. Hopefully you heard about it or saw a little bit about it, which was super fun. Brand-new event, something that we'll ideally do annually again, and it brought 150 bike riders here from all over. There were people from Eastern Iowa, Iowa Falls, the whole area. A lot of people came from Panorama, and really, we were expecting like 50 bike riders and then got 150. So that was great, even though it was cold and wet and rainy. But it's a good uh standpoint, a good starting point for future events, which hopefully we can have like a mini rag bri, one-day rag bri just around Green County, which would be good to again showcase Green County, showcase Jefferson, which is what the whole idea of the Events Committee is, is to bring people to see the quality of life we have in Jefferson. Which leads me straight to the Bell Tower Festival, which is the next event that we're really uh steamrolling here, which y'all know it. It's second weekend in June, which if you had any specific questions about it, I could sure answer it for you, but I'm excited for this Bell Tower Festival, because I think it will be different than other festivals that you felt, especially in the last two to three to four to five years. It's gonna look different, it's gonna feel different, and hopefully should be a lot of fun. And probably the staple of that is bringing back the Open Concept, which we kick, kicked off with Rag Bri, the alcohol-drinking Open Concept in the downtown square. That was the first time we ever did that. We did it for Bell Tower Festival 2019, and we'll do it again this year. But we're setting the stage for a really fun, really uh good weekend here, coming up here soon. Which, by the way, Dave Morland is fantastic, which I know he works for the city. He is a stud and very enjoyable to work with, and he's funny, too. So both him, Chief Klaus has been wonderful. Rob Sand has been wonderful helping getting things rolling, so that'll be good. Otherwise, events-wise, we have the golf tournament, which has been a staple in the Chamber calendar, which now the Main Street and Chamber calendar will be a staple. That's coming July 23rd, which would be good, so we should get a golf team out there. Dave Moran, get a team together, yeah? Sounds good. You've been working on that driver, hopefully. Yep, me too. Golf tournament will come, and then later, the only other event on my schedule is the Winter Festival, which kicked off again two years ago, 2019, pre-COVID. That might have even been 2018. I can't even remember anymore, but we'll do that again. It's kind of the Bell Tower Festival's counterpart for the winter, which ideally that will be the first weekend in December, and uh will be kind of a festival of trees of sort, and lots more information coming later on that. But that is the events roundup right there.
And just a few updates from our Board of Directors quickly. Um, just to reiterate on what Deb had mentioned, the Mahaney Bell Tower was awarded the Outstanding Rural Attraction for the Iowa Tourism Conference. Uh, Jefferson was awarded Outstanding Marketing Materials for a rural area, um also at the Iowa Tourism Conference. Our Main Street Iowa Partnership Visit with the state is on June 10th, and I know we have a couple of you involved in that, so thank you for your participation in helping us um conduct a successful visit. Um, our Community Appreciation Night, as Carol mentioned, is June 16th at 7:00 PM, and you're all welcome to attend. Um, and mostly just thank you for your support, and um let me or anyone here representing the organization know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to reports. Jim?
Uh, 2021 Alley Reconstruction Project. Uh, contracts have been signed. We'll have a pre-con is scheduled for the end of June. Uh, looking to start construction on that after July 1st or July 4th. Uh, the Trails Project, all the concrete work is done uh on Dovendick Park. All the restoration is done. Um, there is a project as a whole, which included the, the Greenwood section, Trails, Dovendick Park, and Central Avenue and East Lincoln Way. Uh, there's some punchless work to do, but otherwise that's pretty much finished up. Uh, the Runway Project is progressing on the uh fabric and subbase installation, getting ready for paving on that. Uh, water treatment plant, uh the preliminary engineering report, and the uh risk resilience and emergency response plans are progressing to get those done on, on, on track with the schedule. Um, and the wastewater treatment facility, uh preliminary design is progressing, and 3D scans of the inside of the buildings will be completed next week. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Roxanne?
No report.
Dave?
No report.
Mike?
Um, Jim mentioned a little bit on the airport. We had an airport commission meeting. Uh, they're going to be replacing about, I think, three or four roofs out of the, uh, some of the hangars that are badly in need of it. They're starting to move more of the commission towards, let's, let's focus heavily on maintenance. They're gonna be crack ceiling out there. Future projects are, put a fuel farm in for jet fuel. Um, they'll also look at some, adding more hangars, too. So they're, they're, they're pretty busy out there on the air, on the airport, seeing, along with our extension going on. Well, a lot of our Public Works guys are very, very busy. Everybody's busy in, right now, and really doing a fantastic job with uh the things we had going on with the fire at Landis. Um, I think the mayor will comment a little bit on that, but um during this thing, I want to talk, our Public Works guys, they are actually doing our parking lot out behind City Hall. Um, it's quite, quite a project to see. They're doing a fantastic job of putting curb gutter down. I think they did about 45 yards of concrete for paving, and it's already, it's already done and striped and opened half of it now. So they'll start the other half next week. But kudos to them. I know they're doing, they're juggling a lot of things, people taking vacations for them to be able to get that done. Um, last thing, I think you saw a lot of the uh, a lot of, a lot of the people who do volunteer work, like for the planters and things, we have a lot of volunteers out there who just, who volunteer time to help out Public Works to plant, to water those plants in the mornings, and on weekends and holidays. Just want to acknowledge all their help for doing that, along with the Public Works who do supply guys during the week to help water those. So that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mark? Chad?
Uh, I've been communicating with Megan at the Funky Zebra, and she's hoping to be open this weekend again, so stop in there, check progress, and see how that's coming along. Uh, next council meeting, uh we'll have, we'll set hearings for the sale of three more uh of the city lots, just trying to get rid of some of these lots that really aren't beneficial to the city. I think we have three nuisance properties right now that are scheduled for demolition. And it's 506 North Maple, 703 North Wilson, and uh 403 East State. So I think within the next, we'll play next two weeks, 30 days, those will be coming down. And um we're looking to acquire a couple more nuisance properties, uh try and get those torn down sometime this year, yeah? And that's what I got going on.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to just acknowledge the job you've been doing since you started. It's pretty amazing. Every agenda, pretty much, we've got one, two, three items on there where you're moving properties or getting properties sold, so thank you. All right, Harry?
Uh, no further report.
Darren?
No report.
Pat?
No report.
Matt?
Um, we had a, we had a sign company representative stop in at our Park and Rec meeting to do a little presentation of a, about the new video board out at the community center there, and uh it looked very promising. It's the same company that supplied the, the board for the high school, the new high schools out by the, by the highway. So we're gonna get some more formal numbers put together to look at, but we, kind of initially looking at a board about the size of the one at the high school that would perhaps replace the uh, the stationary board out there, or the sign, I should say, out at the intersection, and use that same pedestal, that foundation that's there. That's kind of some of the early looks at it, uh, and some, some neat ideas I think are coming for that. So we'll see what happens and what kind of numbers we get, but um I, I think the board is very pleased with what we saw and was, was really happy with our options. So as soon as we get some more formal things to look at and vote on, we'll have probably a recommendation for a new sign for the, for the community center out there. Um, other than that, uh just want to say thanks to Sean and the mayor for helping get the technology set up today. I, I did not have to miss and get the, to be able to hear what everybody's talking about today, so that's it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dave?
One thing, especially to council members in any departments, I had an email get hacked. It comes in on dslowncc@outlook.com. It's not me. Don't respond to it. Hey, I don't, I don't need your account. And if you do want to write me a check, I will take that. Other thing, kind of some good news, through sharpening pencils and working really hard and with Jim's help with Bolton and Mink professionally and financially and keeping us on track, next week we should get to vote on whether we're gonna go ahead with the animal shelter. We, we got it down to about $750,000, so that's coming up great, hopefully next council meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank and point out that the job that the fire department's been doing out there, the grain elevator, I think today, they said was the first day they had, had to be out there for a while. Um, law enforcement's been great. The city crews have been great is out there, and I don't even think all the fire trucks were there yet, and city crews had barricades out and was blocking traffic, so everybody worked together really well, and it, so that is a fantastic job. And we're adjourned.